Kind of on the tax bills, so we've given them permission to mail and send them out. So you should be seeing those next week. Next is, just to let you know that the code officer and myself are going to be getting trained by Dan Crampitz on the website Friday morning. So we're gonna start doing some of that, and I think he's gonna give you more of an update here shortly. The fire extinguishers from the town hall and transfer station were inspected today, so they've all got the 23, 24 tags on them now.
Very good.
A couple of residents asked me to follow up on their behalf, and they're happy to come to next week's meeting if you would like, about the purchase of a speed trailer. If you recall, the speed trailer that we were given through a grant through the sheriff's department, we paid $500 for the trailer many moons ago, has some sort of Bluetooth connection issue. The sheriff's department IT and our IT have worked together, and they cannot get it to work, you know. Value is a couple thousand dollars, and I think it was back with Deputy Shaw originally. So it's, you know, it's gotta be nine to at least nine years, I'm thinking.
Okay.
So they'd like you to buy another one with your excess funds, is what was worded.
I see. Do we have any idea what one of these costs?
I'm gonna say two to four thousand dollars.
Who actually takes it out and places it?
Deputy Shaw. Deputy Shaw, I got him on my brain. Deputy Sanborn.
So, okay, so they...
They handle everything.
They handle everything. And is it, so it's totally portable?
Yep.
How is it powered?
Solar.
Solar, okay.
Solar on a trailer.
And so you say a couple thousand dollars?
Yes. We priced them, so several months ago, I think it was Mr. Nass came forward and talked about our trailer being broken, and we looked into it a little bit. The sheriff's department gave us some leads, and we really just didn't do anything with it. This is a completely different resident, and the street is willing to come to next week's meeting to talk about it, or are you happy for me to get some prices and see if we can look at the next step?
Go ahead.
What happened to the old one?
Well, we still have it. It's still at the fire station.
If we were to get a new one, is, what are we gonna do with that? You can't get money for any capacity for it?
I mean, it was, I think it was fifteen hundred dollars originally. It's well, been well over nine years. I mean, does that sound right with Dan Shaw? Has to be at least nine years.
That's a hundred and fifty dollars a year, which was good money. Okay.
I mean, we'll see if we can do anything with it, but as I understand it, it's junk.
You know, I've heard mostly, I've heard comments both ways about them. I don't know anything about these things. Some people think, oh, it's an opportunity to see how fast you can go.
Absolutely.
And, you know, get that up. And others think, oh, no, this will, you know, try to reduce speeds in the town, which I think is a great thing to do.
And they have, they have changed them, much in tribute, they have changed them so that they no longer go over a certain amount. Now it just says you're going too fast.
Okay, yeah, I've seen those, that's right.
Three double digits.
Is there any research?
Yeah, not double digits, but yeah.
Is there, what does the sheriff's department think of these things? Do they think they're a good idea?
Yes, they're the ones that promoted it originally, and they would be happy for you to have another one.
Okay, well, I don't know about you guys. That's, that's fine with me. Do we have the funds in our budget to pay for this?
I mean, it wasn't something that we specifically budgeted for.
No, but can we find the resources to pay for it?
I'm sure an equipment line, I mean, the deployment of equipment line. Let me look around, let me get prices.
How do we find out about that? And for an item like that, you know, it's, it's two thousand?
I mean, they were two thousand then, so I haven't quoted them a while.
And our policy wouldn't re...
Two thousand and up, depending on what you wanna get.
Okay, well...
I'm in the process of...
I believe there's a place in Scarborough that sells them, because I called the sheriff's department, and he gave me an actual place, so...
Would he, if there are ones with various options, would they kinda recommend for us setting what they think might be appropriate?
I'm sure they would. I'm sure that Sean would love to do them.
Let's rely on them, and let's get the information when we bring it back here and talk about it, and encourage the public tonight for public comment. You can speak about that, or anyone has any thoughts, one way or the other, write to us. Tell us about it. We'd love to hear your thoughts on it. Fair enough?
Yes, sir. Next is an update on the deputy town clerk tax collector. It has been several months, and I apologize to the applicants, I've tried to reach out to them, but we've done a second and third round now, and I think that we've narrowed it down to a candidate. Tom met, Tom met with me and the individual on Monday.
Yes.
And would like to move forward and make an offer.
Okay, so do you need a motion from me?
Um, no, I mean, I just support. You wanna tell them without saying much?
Oh, I did meet her. This is the second round of interviews now that we've done, and I gotta tell you, I was, she's a delightful person. I think she'll, I think she'll be a great addition to the office. I think she'll interact very well with customers. Her background demonstrated an ability to understand, you know, procedures and technology, and she's got a good finance background, and she was very eager. She, she is currently employed and was looking forward to getting into a setting that would be less stressful for her, believe it or not, coming here for less stress, but I can understand where she is.
If you knew the details, you would agree.
No, but...
She was gonna point the job down.
No, no, but she's, I think she'll do a great job. So I would recommend going forward.
All right.
Sounds good to me.
Dan?
So making an offer, is that what the next step would be?
Yes, to see if she'll accept the offer.
Is there any possibility, I mean, I, I know, I mean, I would like to just review if any way I could see the application just to...
Absolutely.
Sure. Before I make any decisions.
So we're not gonna meet again until next week, so I guess, I mean, I'm happy for you to see them afterwards, you know, after the meeting, but...
Let's put it this way, you have my vote of approval, and it sounds like you have Ed's. Unless you've got a concern, unless he expresses a concern, why, you take a look at it, and if you're comfortable, go ahead forward and make the offer. Fair enough?
Yeah.
Okay, and you're all set on the range and so on.
Yes, yeah, it's budgeted so far.
We talked about that, and, okay, great. Thank you.
Next is, just to let you know that the Balch Dam, we had the email from the individuals in Balch Dam. Newfield essentially handled it. In your inbox, you'll find a very lengthy email from a butter to the Balch Dam. Just FYI, so you can read it, he just sent it today.
He, is he, does he own on the lake or in a butter?
He is in a, he's in a butter to the dam.
Oh, interesting.
So he's got a lot of concerns, erosion, he feels like Acton has a portion of it. I don't know if anybody's seen it yet, but...
I have, yeah.
Okay. Just looking for you to read it and give your thoughts maybe next week. Normally, Newfield takes the lead on it because it's in their town.
Who, who, who is responsible for the dam?
Well, we pay part of the dam keeper. Newfield handles the hiring of it and the schedule.
Where is the dam located?
Ed?
It's right in the middle, isn't it?
It's all, where is it?
It's Acton Ridge Road.
Acton Ridge Road.
Is that Acton?
Yes.
So the dam is, is right on the line?
Right on the line.
So do we, is...
Is this a butter on Acton or?
Newfield.
Is it Newfield?
Yes.
What caught my attention was the reference to litigation.
Yes.
Potential litigation, because the, the water has been rising in terms of the amount that they retain in the lake. It's causing erosion, it's, it's creating problems for property owners, and this individual raised the suggestion that it could create potential litigation risk to the town. I don't know if that, you know, what that is. I would personally share that letter with, with council.
Okay.
And just get a sense of, you know, what the issues are.
Do any of you, do you know right off if this is, because I didn't compare it, I didn't have time it really came in, is this the same individual that they dealt with in the previous email that you had shot?
I don't know.
So we don't know that?
I don't know that.
So I'll compare names, and I'll make sure that legal sees it.
But given that it's been raised, I think we ought to be prepared and know what our obligations and rights are.
Okay.
Okay? Would you all agree with that?
Sure.
Okay, great.
And then the last is a reminder to the road liaison, the road commissioners who aren't with us, road committee chair, that the road assessment meeting is tomorrow, the fourteenth.
Four o'clock?
Yes, yes.
The road assessment.
The engineer, Simego Tech is coming down. This is the one that's scheduled for a few weeks. I'll actually text the gentleman to make sure they're here, but just a reminder that that's tomorrow.
Is, has the chair of the road committee been invited to this?
I have sent several emails.
Great, terrific, thank you. Are you going in?
I'm gonna try to.
Great.
If I can get out of working time.
Okay.
I should.
Yeah, yeah, we ought to have somebody there.
If you can't, let me know, and I'll see if I can get somebody to...
Are the road commissioners gonna be there?
Tom, I have told them, I've sent emails, I've done what I can do. I'm sending them messages now. I know that this is heavy...
They haven't, they haven't confirmed whether they're gonna attend or not?
Much better.
I guess I'm, I guess I'm questioning the wisdom of having a paid engineer come in to do this work without the road commissioners present.
I'll make sure they're there, or we'll...
Let's make sure they are, and so that if we're gonna go forward with this engagement, we know that we're doing the right thing.
And remember what he's looking for.
In the right way.
It's gonna be pointed a lot to you, Ed. Is there, you know, we signed this contract for the $10,000 for the assessment. The purpose of the meeting is to find out exactly what the town is looking for.
That's right.
So we wanna make sure.
It's an important meeting.
Will says he'll be there, so it's one down.
Wonderful. Thank you, Will. And Adam, let's find out about Adam as well, so, okay, good.
And that's all I have tonight.
In David's absence, he, he called me.
Adam will be there.
Adam will be there. Thank you, Adam.
It's like they're watching.
David and I had the opportunity to talk about the water levels in Square in preparation for the bridge replacement. The water levels are currently extremely high for this time of year. They're almost at spring levels, as I, as I've observed. And so I think we've been able to work something with Sanford and the bridge, the dam operator and Curtis to get them all on the same page about where the levels ought to be so that we can do this project well.
Did you reach Alex?
Yes, I did.
Oh, good.
I reached out, and I talked to the dam operator, and turned it over to David, and he's kinda working with Curtis to, to, to bring them all together. We need a communication to the property owners on Square.
Yes.
Letting them know that we are planning to draw down the lake, and we ought to specify to what levels.
Do we know?
No, that's what those people need to figure out. Curtis, the dam operator, and David, what, how low do we need to go in order to be able to do this project in a way that, you know, is conducive to environmental matters and, and so it, it could be, you know, one feet, two feet, I have no idea. It's a lot of water, and normally they don't lower the lake until, and I'm saying a lot of this because I hope people are listening and can talk to their neighbors about it. Normally, they don't lower the lake until Columbus Day. We're gonna have to lower it, have it all lowered by, I believe, October third.
Yep.
October second, October third. So we need a communication to go out to all the residents, and if we could draft one...
And we have drafted it, and we have it prepared, but without that information...
All right. Well, David is working on that. He will get some way of describing for people when, how much, and that kind of thing. I've got a mailing list from SPIA that, and they have, I think their membership is around 70% of the residents on that lake. So unless you have a better way of getting to them...
Yeah, I mean, Trio, I can just print mailing labels from Trio to, I can type in the roads.
Okay. But we gotta do Shapley, too.
Yeah, no, Shapley has the same online assessing.
You can do the mailing list, that's fine. I'll send you what I got, you can, but we need to get something out to them soon, so it's great you've already drafted this.
Yes, we're ready.
You're always two steps ahead of me.
Well, no, I just need the date.
So that's good.
Okay. I'll follow up with David tomorrow.
Thank you.
That's, that's all I have on that.
Liaison updates.
Skip the department.
Oh, department head, excuse me.
You guys all have one of those. So Wayne's here to go over a few things. The telephone system is gonna be under old business because we're hoping to get an actual vote on it, so we'll hold off on that until old business.
Okay.
Okay.
Got a bunch of other little things, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Just gonna give, just here tonight, obviously deal with the phone system, and I wanted to give a quick update to the board of things happening across the street and what we're doing. First one, I wanna start off, our new hire, Doug. We hired him as the fourth full-timer that got approved of this year's budget. He's on board, off to a great start. He's enthusiastic to be here. As Ed knows, he's a wealth of knowledge, so it's a huge asset to our department, and I think he's gonna do well here.
Great.
Also, over the course of, it's probably like a year, but just recently, over the last couple of months, I've had five members of the department have upgraded to either newly issued EMT license or have upgraded to the paramedic status, which is the highest, paramedic is the highest level of medicine we can perform in the ambulance in the street at our level. So that's a huge, huge asset to our department. The new hydrant at the tennis courts is, that's been in the making for a couple of years.
Great.
With budgetary constraints, is now in service, flows plenty of water, so...
Looks good.
Should last us a long time with this new hydrant process.
Is that something that Will did?
Yes.
Yeah, did a nice job.
Yeah, he's just the road commissioner, yep. Also, just a couple of things we're working on. I'm in the process of putting a plan together to, I wanna increase the number of AEDs we have in the community, to include getting the one here at the town hall currently on the same platform as we use a next door, so we can have the same supplies. So when stuff happens here, or they expire, I have them across the street readily available. This current AED here in the town hall does not take the same equipment that ours does because it's two different brands. So like usual, they don't comply with each other. So in order to have a better and smoother operation, we're gonna try to streamline things all the same brand that we use, so I have the supplies readily available.
Where are they located?
Currently, we have, obviously, we have one in the school outside the gymnasium. I have talked with the school to add three more to their arsenal down there. Basically, I want one on each end of the building because it's a long stretch of a building to get back to the gymnasium. And they're also gonna have one that will be primarily assigned to the nurse's office so they can go in their go-bag when they have to evacuate the building. But it'll also be available to the athletic, whenever they have games and stuff, it'll be out on the field, because it does no good in the school. So there's that. The one here at town hall, obviously, I'm looking, depending on prices and how everything comes back, looking to get one to the transfer station where we have a lot of people on a regular basis. I would like two more for my department, so there's one on every marked vehicle that's in the street. I currently have two vehicles that don't have an AED or cardiac monitor. And then I'm looking to get one to how is at our own rec fields that'll be down there during the months that they're working or have games and activities going on, so basically spring and fall. And then we'll figure out where it permanently lives after that, but I think having one available down there during events is, is huge.
What, I assume there's training required for these, use of these things?
Yep. Working with CPR instructors that I have in the department, we'll work on getting all staff, coaches, and town employees that are in those facilities trained already. The school already does their own thing, but a goal of mine will be that every town employee that has access to these will have the training.
Great.
Yeah, we've had it once here, so we appreciate that.
What do they cost per unit?
Rough estimate right now for everything is about $2,500 apiece, but I'm working out trying to get the pencil sharpened a little bit more where we're ordering so many at once.
Are you thinking you'll, you'll ask for a special warrant for this?
I'm gonna talk to all the department heads and see if we can make it happen before that out of existing budget line.
Okay, all right, well, let's see how that goes.
The department will pay them out of their own.
Yeah, well, let's see how this goes.
Like, if, if we can get the funds together at all departments, I'll place one big order so that way it's done, and then we can...
Everybody would pay for their own, the idea.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yep.
Okay, great.
And one other project I'm working on currently, I have some failing equipment in our mobile data. So this is our tablets that we use in the street for our mapping on our trucks. The cardiac monitor connects to it, so we can upload to our reporting system, and also our computer also connects into this, so we can do patient care reports in the field or at the hospital, wherever we need to do them. Working, we currently use Verizon, working on a few estimates to try to, A, save us some money. Town minister and I spent a good portion of an hour trying to, I have some devices that have failed.
Trying to get a live person.
And need, need replacing, and it's through Verizon. I'm like, all right, cool, I can go down to Verizon in town and get an upgraded device so we can get back to operations, right? They can't deal with any of the government contracts in the store. And then they gave me a phone number to call, which is this, you know, six one one...
It's usually a separate division.
Tech support, right? But you gotta use it for, you gotta call from the phone that's attached to the account.
But they're Bluetooth, they're not even phones.
Right, so I don't have a phone, they're only...
iPads.
Right, so...
It was fine.
But it's a data line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you're looking for a data line, right?
So they wanna take call from that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have to call, which we can't call, right? So it doesn't work. So we finally get a number, we finally make it happen, and I was less than desirable with the customer service that is being offered to us at that level. So I'm exploring other options to try to...
We're not in a contract or anything.
Yeah, no, no contracts.
Contract, right.
If you do renew your device or get an upgraded device through Verizon, you gotta sign another two-year contract. Right now, all of the fire department's devices are not in contract.
Eligible for...
Do all of the AT&T, Verizon, do they all use pretty much the same network? It used to be they, you know, one had better coverage than another.
Yeah, they, they use their own networks.
So which one offers the best coverage? Because that's probably pretty important to you, isn't it?
Yep, absolutely. So that's why I'm trying to work out all the details right now.
Okay.
We're working towards that, because I got failed devices I need to replace, but before I go replacing it and get locked into another two-plus-year contract...
Yeah.
I'm trying to see what other options are available to us, and maybe even save some money along the way.
They, they're, they still require contracts?
Yeah.
Multi-year contracts?
For some company, yeah.
I thought they were doing away with that. Or at least other providers are.
We talked to at least one that doesn't require a contract, haven't we?
Correct, correct.
So there are some out there, Tom, that don't, so...
Yeah, well, unless you're getting a real discount for a contract, signing a contract, I wouldn't, I'd find someone else.
That's exactly...
And that's what I'm trying to work on right now.
Yeah.
Because I'm not interested in signing a contract because of the, and I'm not interested in Verizon really at all, because I have no way to get the direct customer feedback that I need. Like, currently, right now, again, I have devices that aren't working, so it does me no good. I thought we could go right down to the store, and that's not the case, so...
Wayne went right to Sanford, so he was...
Okay.
So it doesn't work, so I'm working on that.
Okay, great.
And he's got the money budgeted, he's got the, he planned on upgrading equipment, so that's already in there, it'd be a regular purchase, and then his monthly fee he was already paying, so it's, we'll get it switched over and get that upgraded right away.
That's all I have for updates.
Thank you.
So I wait for the phone system.
Okay. Any other department heads, committee chair updates?
I'll stay up for a while, since he doesn't wanna move. Dan Crampitz, I wanna give you a website update. When you first started rolling out the website, I told myself I would be extremely happy if we got 100 subscribers to the newsletter. We're at about 175 right now.
Nice.
Which I'm very pleased with, but that leads me to a question. When I first started rolling it out, I was also attaching it to the What's Up in Acton page. Would you like me to continue doing that, or just rely on the email distribution?
You mean attaching it?
Yeah, I don't know.
So when you get the email, there's a link, so that the newsletter is essentially a webpage on our provider's site that you can go to. So if you look at the emails, it'll say, see this in a browser? If you click on that, it's gonna open that webpage. So what I do, what I've been doing...
The town's webpage?
No, the MailChimp webpage, who we use for our newsletters, right?
Okay.
But it's our content, it's the content I put on the newsletter every week. Do you want me to continue posting that on Facebook?
Oh, you're just taking the newsletter, you're copying and pasting the newsletter according to it.
That link, you're putting, you're putting the link out.
Correct, correct. Yes.
So you think that maybe not putting it on there will encourage more people to sign up for it?
I don't know.
Or what are you thinking?
I don't know.
I don't think it hurts to put it on there, to copy and paste it.
I don't think it hurts, I mean...
It doesn't hurt anything. When I first started, I said we're only gonna do it for a few weeks, so people knew it was there, but I'm now thinking that I'd much rather have it there every week, so the information's out there. No one can say, I didn't see it, I don't get it, anything like that.
Right, and we're doing fine with the hours, you have time to do it based on our...
Absolutely, yes. So it takes me, so I spend probably, depending on the content, anywhere from one and a half to three hours on Friday mornings putting the newsletter together. It takes me five seconds to put it on Facebook.
From candidate's night, that was one thing that came out, was more, you know, have, have more information out there for everyone, and that's a great, everybody's good, 99% of the world has Facebook.
Yeah.
So it doesn't hurt to throw it on there.
Okay.
As far as I'm concerned, why don't you let me get back to you on that? I don't know how the others feel, but I'd like an opportunity to think about this.
It's fine by me.
How do you folks feel?
I think people, some people use Facebook, some people use email, some people use just a website. I think having it on as many platforms as possible makes sense, because there are some people who you'll cover with one, but you won't cover with another, so...
Right, and it's the same content, no matter where we put it.
So I think, I think, I think it's good to keep it that way, 'cause there's some people just aren't gonna subscribe because they just don't want another thing in their email because they already have so many, so having it on Facebook is an easy thing for them to click on, so...
Does the town normally post things on their website?
On the Facebook, yes, I mean, we try...
On, on What's Up Acton?
Yes, I try to put all my public, I turn the comments off.
'Cause it's not a, it's not a town website.
It is not.
It's a, it's independently managed.
Right.
And, um...
So something we could think of is have a town...
Page.
Facebook page. Not, not something I wanna jump into without a lot of thought and consideration.
I mean, for, for public notices and election notices and nomination papers, we copy and paste the information on there, Tom, and we turn the comments off, so we don't have to monitor it, it's just, it's factual information, take it or leave it, you know what I mean?
I, I don't go on social media, all I know is I hear, you, you know, both, you know, comments of all kinds...
Right.
About that page, and, um, I don't know enough to know whether any of that is valid or not, but I, I, I guess I'd like to do a little more research on it and think about it before we kinda establish an official link into that page that we basically have no, no input to.
Well, all he's doing though is copying and pasting the information.
I know, I know, but, but...
Really, anybody could do that that read the newsletter.
Well, and if they wanted to do that, they could, it's just that this will be an official act of the town, I just wanna think about it.
That's right.
For me personally, that's all.
I don't have an issue with that.
Okay?
Um, the only other thing I wanted to mention was we're still working on getting the website registrar change to us from Teto. Um, the last time I checked, it was still locked, I did send an email to our current host for our email, that's what we're waiting for. Um, he gave me a response that someone's here visiting for the week and he'll look at it when they leave. Um, I, I, I do know this gentleman is, is somewhat ill, so I know he has a lot of family in him.
Okay, alright, so no issue here.
He should do it at the beginning of the week.
I'm not concerned about it unless the email gets shut off.
Good.
It won't.
Alright.
That was it, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, liaison updates, uh, seems the treasurer's been keeping me busy lately. Uh, I, I just want you to know that we had, uh, we had placed, uh, three million dollars into US Treasury notes, Treasury bills, we put a million dollars into a, um, a Treasury money market account. The idea was that three million would just continue to roll over every month, and, uh, that's all working great. The other million was something that we had set up in a way that we could get access to the money if we ever needed it, well, come to find out while we were waiting for tax receipts, we needed it, and so we're in the process of, as planned, taking some of that money out in order to make sure we can pay our bills, and I just, I thought it was worth noting that what we envisioned happening is in fact working well, and the town continues to have access to the resources it needs, okay?
The interest income is just continuing to roll in.
The interest?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, it's, uh, it was a good thing, you know, at some point that may no, no longer work, we might have to do something else, but for right now, Treasuries are a good place to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, good.
I never would have envisioned anything like that, so thank you very much, Tom...
Oh, no, it's...
Coming up with that, I assume you're the one that came up with it and put it together, so, with the help from...
No, I, I'm a lot...
Yeah, no, it's amazing, so, thank you.
Um, that's all I have, any other liaison updates?
Um, last Thursday, the active school had their open house, which seemed to be a success.
Who did, I'm sorry?
The economic school.
Oh, okay.
They had their, their open house, um, it was back to regular the year before, they had done a lot with, like, logging accounts, this one was just typical meeting the teachers and, and kind of having snacks and stuff. Um, tomorrow is a, um, school board meeting.
Yeah.
Um, if anyone's interested, it's supposed to be, I think, an exciting one because they're introducing all the, all their new teachers, so everybody hasn't really had the chance to meet their new teachers, it'll be a good kind of hear them introduce themselves, and that's at five PM, and I'll be there.
Great. Did I say that? Very good. Um, I think we're onto old business, fire station phone system bids.
Alright, so as requested, we brought Wayne in, um, and we've put together a breakdown that we wanted to show you that I'm not sure we noticed at the prior time, but the bids actually include two different prices, actually, Wayne, you tell him, sorry, I can take over, go ahead.
Alright.
Give him the breakdown.
So, we're only able to get the two bids, one of them is the, the bid that we got when we prepared budgets, um, and they're holding their price to today.
Since March?
Well, not today, but they're holding their price for us, even though they gave it to us a long time ago. Um, in both proposals, you'll see, um, the, the main part of it, which is the fire station itself, and then the remote building or on one, and then it is outbuilding on the other, it's under optional on the second, uh, proposal. But that is the training, uh, room that, the meeting room that we use, the other building, there's currently no phone system out there, we're doing, uh, internet via wifi, um, so why we're there and with this project was our opportunity to, um, get the phones over there, so if people are using the gym or over there training, uh, we still have, the phones still ring in, uh, currently. If that's not the case, then we don't have a wireless phone to just pick up and walk out there with, so, as you can see, those are the two proposals that we got and the prices that go with them, um...
Are they apples and apples? Are they basically the same? Is this a matter of price, or is there something in terms of the, the functionality or, or details of these two options that matter?
The, the, I'll just come up with my recommendation right now, it'll be easier to talk about. I'm recommending Coastal Telephone, that was one, that's the original bid we got, that's the bid, uh, that is the company that the town of Acton and the municipal offices has used for fifteen years.
Yeah.
Um, with no, uh, issues, excuse me, that relate to me. Their system clearly, i- and as you can see in the proposals, one is way more detailed than the other, and I think that's helpful for us trying to understand what we're looking at, and Coastal Telephone did that. You'll see that they, uh, their system or the phone will allow up to five hundred users and seventy-five concurrent phone calls at once.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the other company, uh, TeleTeo, only allows for the one line at a time, so therefore, if someone's on the phone, no one else can use it, and no one else can ring in, you gotta get busy signal.
It's a digital versus an analog, is what we found, so, yeah.
Thank you.
That's...
I don't know about anyone else, but that kinda takes care of it for me, Wayne. Uh, so you're recommending Coastal?
Yes, please.
Uh, for very good reasons. Uh, shall we have a motion?
I will make a motion, we go with Coastal for, which number is the exact number we're using?
On the contract, the sixty-two ninety-five oh three.
Sixty-two ninety-five oh three.
And, uh, I'm sorry, in second? Okay, um, does, is there maintenance with this, is that included in this, or, how's that work?
As far as years to come?
If you have a service issue, do, is there a maintenance contract, or how does it work?
There's no maintenance contract, if we have an issue, we'll pay for whatever the fix is.
Pay for an hour?
Yep, yep, just like anything, anything else, it does have...
Is there a warranty with it?
One year from data installation to less damage due to accidents, misuse, or acts of nature is the warranty.
I can tell you that, Tom, we got our system somewhere around two thousand and eight here, they still come out anytime I call them, you know, for a minimal hourly charge from Bedford.
I just wanna know if there were any other costs that weren't reflected in here, but no, this is it until there's some repair cost.
And, and I'll just add this, that, uh, obviously, I'm new in my spot as a department head, but I'm hoping through, uh, the good communication I have with the town administrator that as we move forward with other projects like this, that we can time stuff together and save some money as we go for each department, like, they have, the town office obviously upgraded the phone systems in two thousand and eight, we're still using the nineteen-ninety-eight phone system when the station was built, so, uh, if we can keep projects like that in mind, that's all I ask, we do stuff a little together.
Before we ask for a vote, any comment? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further from the chief?
No.
All in favor? Motion, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, your county sheriff department contract?
There's another email looking for the finances, nothing yet.
Nothing yet, okay, and, and this comes up in December?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and, and, and Chapley's on the same schedule?
Chapley's waiting to have a special town meeting to get this funded.
To get them, get the funding, okay, um, alright, so, um, keep us posted.
Yes, sir.
Acton-Chapley Historical Society, Lincoln School.
So at last week's meeting, you told me to confirm that, um, my inkling was correct, that you could enter into a lease, uh, between the Historical Society and the Lincoln School, and Brad Moore confirmed that, yes, you can.
Okay.
Uh, he did say that as long as it, um, you know, there's an out clause for the town.
Yeah, well, I guess there would be an out clause, but there would be a term on it as well, this wouldn't be a ninety-nine year lease, this is a, at least initially, a short-term lease until we figure out what kinda work needs to be done there. Um, I, I would suggest that one of the selectmen be asked to work with, uh, the Historical Society, uh, to kind of, uh, develop a program for how we're gonna go about doing this with them, and part of that process would also determine the sort of terms to the lease, but also understand if, if we're gonna have somebody come in and assess the building, what is it, what's the scope of what it is we're trying to achieve here, uh, so that we don't let this turn in, personally, I'd rather not have it turned into something that talks about inside the building, it's more structural integrity retention, so, um, I think we need someone from the board to, to liaise with them, does that make sense, gentlemen?
Mm-hmm, I'd be happy to.
You'd be happy to?
Yep.
There you go.
Other buildings and whatnot?
Yeah, that's great, that's great.
Now, I recently saw something on Facebook where someone is soliciting painting for the outside of the building.
I s- I didn't see it, my wife is on Facebook, so, but I...
I don't recall whether it said...
It was for the Historical Society, not for the...
Well, that's what I don't remember, whether it was the Historical Society or whether it was general info.
Clearly, no one is authorized to do anything to that building unless, unless we're involved in it, so, I, I, I believe it was for the Historical Society building, they were soliciting a painting bid.
I just hope they were aware of it.
No, it's, it, well, that's their issue, so, uh, um, but it, it did not involve the Lincoln School, but if we find that it does, we'll certainly...
Oh, it was Lincoln School, there was painting of the, outside of the Lincoln School.
Oh.
Yeah.
Somebody send me that, I'm having trouble finding it.
We should, I, I don't know who it was, but we should send a cease and desist.
Definitely a cut before the horse deal there, so...
I'll, uh, see if I can find it, if somebody finds it.
Let's, let's have a, you know, either David or one of us can sign it, I'll let it to him, to him or her, whoever it is, cease and desist.
Yes.
Okay?
Yep.
No one should be doing anything on behalf of the town.
No, no.
Okay, yeah, thank you, thank you for doing that. Um, okay, new business? I don't believe we have any. Public comment?
About two years ago, at the town meeting, we appropriated funds to do something with the parking lot in front of the old fire station, I wondered if there had been any movement on that or a plan.
Yes, um, we've hired an engineering firm, we have not specifically let that bid go yet, or, or work go yet, but the idea was that that firm would, um, do some of the preliminary engineering and design work around these kinda projects for the town, so, you, you look like you have a question.
Isn't it just reconstruction of the parking lot, or is something gonna happen with the building?
That's what, that's, that's the question, exactly, that we have this parking lot, this is a, in my view, I don't know anything about this other than, it's a challenging site because of the slope and so on, and it's unclear exactly what we're gonna be doing with that building, uh, whether it's gonna be raised or not, um, but I think we wanna get some, uh, we wanna engage an engineer to help us figure out what to do with this parcel, if you will, uh, including that building and the parking area, and how best to approach that. So, it's, it's, by hiring the firm, we have the resource in place to do that, we haven't yet engaged them, and, I don't know, I think the first step is to figure out what to do with that building, uh, 'cause I don't think you'd wanna do any kinda paving until you figure out whether that's gonna be raised or not, right?
Right.
So that's step one, I guess, and, you know, why don't we put that on a future agenda and talk about it? Thank you for bringing it up.
Okay.
Yeah, to add to that too, so when we did the facility RFP, like you mentioned, um, the engineering company, the board itemized the importance of the, you know, the engineering company's gonna do the transfer station project, they're doing the rec field project, and they're doing the, um, road assessment, so I think that that one came in after those three.
It did, yeah.
So the other three are currently being worked on.
Right.
But, we know...
And the road assessment does not produce a da- database that we can utilize, is that correct?
We don't know that yet, the meeting is tomorrow at four.
We're gonna find that out, Nancy.
Alright.
Alright?
Um, the other question, sort of related, the, um, water system for the town hall, I think we appropriated funds for that last year.
That's in and done, that's been, that's been put in, it's been installed.
So you can drink the water out of the taps?
Drink the water, drink, out of that tap.
Then tested.
There's one, there's one tap in that kitchen.
Okay.
That has a different filter that, yes, and the new water results are posted above it, and we actually, at town meeting, took the extra money because we didn't need the whole thirty thousand, re, um, moved it to, I think, the West Shore Drive, but if you look at last year's warrant, there was a money left over.
It was APRA money, yeah, okay, yeah, wonderful, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, any other comments? Joyce, you wanna just stand from the, sit from there? Go ahead, sit.
Uh, it's, it's okay, um, thanks for the sign on West Shore, that a lot of people...
Well, you can thank Will for that, he did, yeah, did a nice job.
Yeah, but it's a nice sign and everybody was glad to see it, but, um, for the letter that you're talking about, whether they're Acton or Chapley, uh, the Square Pond Improvement Association has a website, and you could probably hit ninety...
I've, I've spoken to Will, he's agreed to pu- put it there, once we get the communication, he'll, he'll put it out there and...
And a first letter?
Yeah, that's right, we'll just post that and, um, we'll, we'll do everything we can to make sure people know, and, and I think the communication ought to say, you know, take a moment and tell your neighbor and make sure people know, you know, 'cause not everyone's gonna see it, and...
Know what they're talking about.
Yeah, 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 I believe they are, thank you. Anything else, Joyce?
No, just, um, that, that sign's great, it's on the end, but I thought I'd mention the Square Pond Association.
Good, good.
With the letter that John Chris is gonna be writing, as a, under the way of communicating.
Susan?
Yes. Um, the reason why I'm here is, as you know, I live on Sam Page Road and it's on the corner of Nathan Road. We have a lot of sand trucks going up and down Sam Page and Nathan, which kinda concerns me because it took, and Ed would note this, several years to get Nathan Road as nice as it is right now.
It's terrible, yeah.
All right, yeah, all these sand trucks, and then they stop at the stoplight, and then they grind through their gears, and then they go the rest of the way on Sam Page Road. I don't know why they can't just go out onto one oh nine.
These local pit owner trucks, is that what you, is that what they are? Are these local pit owner trucks that you think...
So they're cutting across their...
They're coming across Nathan Road?
To get down to West Shore or whatever, where are they going?
Yeah, they're using it as a...
All the way down to Goose Pond.
Right, but I don't think those roads can handle that weight.
We could talk to them, or we could do the same thing we've done on some other roads and just post them.
I'd appreciate that, 'cause, um...
It shouldn't be on that. No, it shouldn't be.
No.
It's, that road's not designed to that.
No, it isn't, and the road's gonna fall apart, and who ends up paying for it? All of us here.
They're coming out of Chapley, up Goose Pond, and cutting across Nathan, and cutting across, yeah, or the other way, using it as a shortcut to Chapley from the H Road.
You wanna look into this and talk about it during next meeting?
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah, 'cause it's like, I, I work at home, and one of the trucks sounds like a helicopter. Have you ever heard that one?
Um, I hear them all the time.